Good morning. I am Ann Smith, a member of the League of Women Voters of Volusia County, and I will be moderating today's forum. This forum will be recorded in its entirety and posted on the League of Women Voters of Volusia County website. Since this is a virtual forum, please be reminded that everyone but the candidates, the timekeeper, and the moderator are to remain muted with the video off in order to have the clearest recording. The views expressed today are those of the candidates, not the League of Women Voters of Volusia County. As a nonpartisan organization, we endorse neither candidates nor political parties. Our goal is to provide an avenue where citizens can gather information to help them make an informed decision at the polls. We do this as a public service. I'll begin by explaining the format. There will be a one-minute opening comment and a one-and-a-half-minute closing comment by each candidate. We will determine the order of these comments by a random ordering using random.org. Candidates will have up to one minute to answer each question, and I will alternate the order of who responds first. The timer, Sari Lehman-Clark, will hold up a yellow card when there is 30 seconds left to speak, and a red card indicating stop at the end of the time allotment for comments and answers to questions. Please do not go beyond your time limit, because I will have to mute you if you do. The same procedure will be used for the opening and closing remarks. In fairness to all, you must not go beyond the time allotted for your comments and answers. Are there any questions?
No.
Seeing none, one final word to our candidates. Our timer will hold up the yellow sign, 30 seconds left, and a red sign when it is stop. So please follow the signs. All right, I'd like to begin by introducing our candidates for the school board District Two seat. In alphabetical order, Anita Burnett, next Andre Grant, and third, Ida Wright, the incumbent. Now I would like to go to random.org. I am going to share my screen, and you'll see I'm going to random.org. And then go down to List Randomizer. And then I am going to type in names of the three candidates in alpha order. And then I will go down and click here where you can see, everybody see the screen that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to click Randomize, and when I do that, it will give us the order of speaking beginning with the opening comment. All right, so it is going to be Ms. Burnett will be first, Ms. Wright will be second, and Mr. Grant will be third. So what that means, let me just explain. For the opening comments, Ms. Burnett will go first, Ms. Wright will go second, and Mr. Grant will go third. In the closing sentence, we do that in reverse order, so Ms. Wright, I mean Mr. Grant will go first, Ms. Wright will go second, and Ms. Burnett will go last. All right, let me get out of sharing, and then let's go now to our opening statements. The opening statement, first person to give an opening statement is Ms. Burnett. So Ms. Burnett, you have one minute to open today's forum.
Hello, good morning, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for supporting this event and inviting us all. My name is Anita Burnett. I grew up in the Daytona Beach area, graduated from Mayland High School. I attended UCF, earning a bachelor's degree in health sciences. I later attended Nova Southeastern University, earning a master's degree in health sciences leadership. I've worked at Halifax Medical Center for 29 years, where I'm in a leadership role in radiology. We set policies and implement processes. I lead a great team of people, and I manage a multimillion-dollar budget. My husband and I have been married for 29, or for 25 years, and we have had two kids through Volusia County school systems. I have seen many changes in the Volusia County schools and in our school system over the years. I've seen mediocrity, I've seen failure, and I've seen school scandal. I know I can do better for our schools and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. The second speaker to give an opening comment, Ms. Wright.
Good morning, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Ida Wright. I'm currently the chair of Volusia County School Board. I have held that seat for seven years. I represent District Two. I too am a Daytona Beach native, a graduate of Mayland High School. My husband, Arthur, and I have been married for 25 years, and we have two sons who came through Volusia County as well. Volusia County has had their share of challenges, but since I've been on the board, we have increased teacher salary. We have increased many, our learning, we've gone from a C district and maintained a B. We're on our way to an A, and there are still many things that we have to. But right now, as we've seen COVID-19 enter the United States, we've had great challenges, and we want to maintain that leadership to make sure that our students, our families, as well as our faculty go through this with the least amount of interruptions and continue on our way to an A. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grant, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Andre Grant, and after this debate, you're going to have to make a decision on who is the best person to lead Volusia County school system in a time of worldwide pandemic and national equity and injustice, dealing with inequality of African-Americans throughout the country. I have a PhD in education from Florida A&amp;M University. I received an athletic scholarship to Bethune-Cookman College, and I received a scholarship to get my PhD from Florida A&amp;M University. I bring to the table a buffet of unique credentials, a superstar athlete as well as a top-notch educator, and I plan to bring all those talents to Volusia County School Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. And so now we will begin with the questions. The first question will go to Ms. Wright, and it is, "What steps would you support to regain focus on teaching students to meet achievement expectations?"
Great question. Well, right now, again, as we talk about the pandemic, actually, it's brought about a perfect storm. Many of our students, and especially those that are low achievers, we need teachers, number one, that really care, two, set high expectations, and three, allowing our students exposure to things such as IB gifted and courses of that nature that bring about that type of level of achievement. However, using technology, and one of the reasons, as a district, we were planning to go 101 in 2020, is so that our students will learn how to not only use technology, but use technology to help close that achievement gap for all of our students. And so for me, number one, hire a teacher that really understands achievement gaps. Number two, that loves students. And number three, that really wants to make sure that our students have exposure as well as have access to high expectations and great education.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Mr. Grant, you have that question now, please.
Repeat the question, please.
"What steps would you support to regain focus on teaching students to meet achievement expectations?"
First, I would look at our institutional and educational facilities at our zone schools and at our schools as a whole to determine what technological changes we need to make. During this pandemic, we see now throughout the districts in the state of Florida as well as Volusia County that we don't have the infrastructure necessary to provide a seamless educational platform for our students. Teachers need to be also trained in technology that will help these students learn and succeed during this crisis.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. The same question, please. You have one minute.
Thank you. Yes, I believe that we need to provide our students with teachers who actually are in the room and have some say with what is going on in the classrooms. Too many times, they feel as though they're not getting enough say to provide the support to the students. We need to offer the teachers proper training, and as been pointed out, we've seen a many of opportunities that we have in this county with the COVID process. And one thing that we could look at is maybe having a process where we offer a little bit more online opportunity so that we can have these processes identified in advance and have a plan and process in place. So I believe in making sure that we have the right resources in the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Mr. Grant, you will answer the next question first. "What steps would you take to equalize the discrepancy in educational opportunities between high-poverty schools and more affluent schools?"
Again, I would look at the facilities in our poverty zone areas. For example, Turriti Small. Turriti Small is almost 70 years old. Across from Turriti Small is a low economic community, and in that community, those kids have challenges. But one thing that can help those students is to have a school that is equipped with all of the technological advances that they need to achieve. Secondly, I will look at government grants. We do not apply for the government grants that we should apply for. I want every person that's listening to me to go online to the U.S. Department of Education and look at post-secondary education and look at all the grants that are provided. You will be hard-pressed to find Volusia County school system on that list.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Burnett, the same question.
Would you please repeat it again?
"What steps would you take to equalize the discrepancy in educational opportunities between high-poverty schools and more affluent schools?"
Yes, so in order to achieve the minority gap in our schools and make everything equal, we need to make sure that we are offering the same resources between these schools. We need to make sure that the students in the poverty-ridden schools do see that they are just as important as a school that's in a more affluent area. We are all the same, and we need to be showing that in the steps that we take in our actions.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, same question, please.
Thank you. I'll go back to what I said first. We've got to change the mindset and move away from a pedagogy of poverty to one of empowerment. So again, we've got to hire effective teachers. Number two, effective teachers that have high expectation for children. Number three, teachers who understand how to deliver that content and expose students to a high-expectation type of pedagogy. And lastly, exposure to items that normally our students don't have access to in high-poverty schools, such as music, karate, extracurricular activities that give them a well-rounded feeling of, yes, I too can compete in any venue. So if we have high-quality teachers, make sure that they understand that these students can learn and have great expectation. You can see the closing of achievement gap, and again, the infusion of technology will assist with that effort.
Thank you. Ms. Burnett, you have this question to answer first, please. "In the marketplace that is now public education, how would you make Volusia Public Schools an attractive brand?"
Thank you. Yes, we have many opportunities that we can do to attract people into our schools. One, we have Volusia online services. We need to market that source to bring people here. We need to offer our educators competitive wages and competitive benefits. This would allow us to bring teachers out of another district and into our district in order to help our students succeed. We need to offer, we need to make sure that our leadership in our district listens to our teachers. We need to make sure that we are offering them a good resource of communication and that we show our teachers respect. Those will all help bring in better marketing into our county.
Ms. Wright, the same question.
And can you repeat that for me, Ms. Smith, please?
Yes. "In the marketplace that is now public education, how would you make Volusia Public Schools an attractive brand?"
Number one, connecting our education to industry. As we look at the ever-changing industry, technology is going to play a major part. So as we look at a high school and middle school, number one, start engaging our students in middle school with the same opportunities our high school students have as academies. So having academies in middle school will help with that. We've got to connect the two, number one. We have to make sure all of our surrounding counties are one-to-ones. As stated previously, that was our goal for 2020, to make sure our students have access to technology. They have to be able to use that in the future. Make sure parents have options. Parents now, again, with COVID-19, are going to be introduced to several platforms of learning. We will have to continue that. Our traditional brick and mortar will be around, but not in the sense that many people think. I think we will see that even morph into something greater. And lastly, to bring people here, housing. So when we talk about attracting teachers, we've got to find a way, how do we help with that? The salary gap will be addressed, but now housing will become an issue. So for us, having something, some incentives as it relates to housing will be effective.
Thank you. Mr. Grant, same question, please.
I'm going to give you an example. When I taught three years in Polk County, I came back to Volusia County. There was a $13,000 decrease in salary. I was making 62 in Polk County. When I came to Volusia County, it went to 47. The first thing we need to do is look at the benefits that we're offering. I worked 12 years in Jacksonville. If you had an issue that was pertinent, you could go to your principal, explain it to your principal, the district would give you two paychecks advance to help you with that personal problem that you had. We also need to look at our teaching staff. How do we make our system a multicultural system? There is a number of ways to do that, but that is one way that we need to do it, with multiculturalism as well as benefits that attract teachers to our district.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. We are coming up to question number four, and Ms. Wright, you will answer this one first. We've heard comments about quality teachers, so here's an opportunity. "What steps will you support to attract and retain high-quality teachers in the classroom?"
Great question. So step number one is the recruitment. It starts with recruiting. And so when you begin to sell Daytona and recruit and look for teachers, we have colleges and universities within our general vicinity that we do have a good relationship, but we have to make the extra effort in recruiting those teachers, number one, who want to stay in the area, number two, who really do, again, believe in establishing high expectation for their students. But I'll go back to it, it's housing. Often, students who graduate from Bethune-Cookman, Daytona State, UCF, Florida State, the surrounding counties and cities, go back home because of housing. And so as a district, if we could come up with a unique housing opportunity with some of our local apartments that will then transition within three years where they can have an opportunity to buy a home, we will not only attract, but then we can retain teachers because they live here. They have made this their home, and they will buy into it, and they live in a community with the children they serve.
Thank you. The same question, please.
I agree somewhat with Ms. Wright, but it's not housing. It's finances. When I taught in Jacksonville, the first day I was hired and received a contract, the district had an agreement with the local credit union to give me a $1,500 loan. That $1,500 loan was given to me to help me relocate to Duval County. Teachers need assistance in helping relocate here, not so much with housing, but with finance. The district helped pave a way for me as a teacher. Out of the three candidates here, I'm the only one that's been a classroom teacher. I've been a classroom teacher in the public school systems of Florida. So in looking at all of those things, what affects classroom teachers is incentives to bring those teachers here who want to work in education.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Burnett, the same question, please.
Thank you. Yes, well, I understand that Mr. Grant is the only teacher in the classroom here, but I have also been in leadership for many years, and I think that leadership is also a good example to start with getting, attracting good teachers, quality teachers, and bringing them here. We need to lead by example. We need to show them that they're valued and respected. We do need to give them a benefit package and a wage package that is comparable and attractive. We also need to make sure that they know they have a voice and a say in what goes on in their classroom, and that, I believe, is how we can attract more, being a good steward of good leadership and showing them that we have faith in them. You will attract the good teachers locally, like Mrs. Wright said, with our local universities here to keep the teachers in our area.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Mr. Grant, you will answer this question first, please. This is question number five. "What can our school board do to help ensure that the leadership and policies of our county address the challenges faced by students of color?"
First of all, we have to have a cadre of teachers, a cadre of administrators, who have experiences the challenges that our students face. Most of our principals, if not all of them, need sensitivity training so that they can understand what law enforcement is doing and things that are going on with law enforcement and other things that impede the learning process in some of the homes. We have a lot of principals who have those skills, but we have a lot of them who don't. I think we need to develop a program with practices that ascertain how those principals and the leadership of this district have matriculated to their positions. They have to have the background so that they can share with their students and their faculties, because the principal is the key person in that school.
Thank you very much. Ms. Burnett, the same question, please.
Yes, so yes, I agree. We definitely need to stand as a board and show and demonstrate that we are there to notice the inequalities and that we are there to help resolve these problems. We need to give our teachers, staff, administration all training on how to address these. I obviously don't understand some of these problems, being of a different race. However, I am willing to listen and be a participant to stand up and support and one in solidarity with those of inequalities. And I am a person that believes of complete equality and understand that we need training in order to bring and achieve this.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, your question, please.
And I agree with my colleague, training is imperative. However, recruitment is equally as imperative. Since I said on the board, one of the things that I've always was concerned about was our equity report. And so when you want to bring about a change and you really want to make sure that people understand, you've got to make sure you have people from all these ethnic, age, gender groups a part of the conversation. And so in our district, recruitment is important, not just for teachers, but recruitment is important for administrators as well as district-level staff that will bring, again, a plethora of experience so that when we have this conversation, it's not, number one, one-dimensional, and number two, when we have the training, we can really have a conversation, because each of us brings some unique experience to the table. And so for me, one of the things we have implemented now that we're revamping with our new superintendent, revamping how we recruit, recruitment is important, but you've got to bring people in with diverse backgrounds who are willing to have tough conversations. Yes, they may be uncomfortable, but to have the conversations to move the district forward so that we really understand every child that we serve.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Question number six. Ms. Burnett, you will answer first. "Do you see inconsistencies in how discipline procedures are applied for all students?" Please explain.
Well, as a board member, I wouldn't see these daily actions. However, we are responsible for setting policy and making sure that everyone is held accountable. Therefore, we would have to make sure that the superintendent and all staff are making sure that when they do processes for accolades as well as punishment, that everyone is treated equal. Accountability.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Ms. Burnett?
No, thank you.
Second response, Ms. Wright. You're muted, Ms. Wright.
Can you please restate that question? Thank you. Can you please restate that question?
Yes. "Do you see inconsistencies in how discipline procedures are applied for all students?" Please explain.
Yes, I'm going to go back to the equity report, but actually, we do have access to that. We can ask for information as it relates to discipline. And one of the things that we've learned is some of the ambiguity when it comes to how people determine or read the policy. We have policies in place, but one principal may interpret that, and one man, and another teacher, or principal may interpret it in another. So we need to be very clear, very defined, even to the point, I'll always ask the principal, and I even asked some of our staff recently, if we had a policy that we did not allow suspensions in our school, then how would we deal with the issues that we encounter? So therefore, if we develop that type of mentality that we can't suspend, we're not going to put in an in-school suspension, how do we then deal with our children, which will help play even the playing field? So it is important that we look at that. We do have access to that, and in addition, we talk to principals. Some principals do a great job, others do not, and they have the same set of policies. So it's about interpretation and making sure that everyone interprets the policy the same.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Mr. Grant, that same question, please.
One of the things I have experienced as a classroom teacher, excuse me, is that when students get into conflicts and they go to the dean's office, that conflict is interpreted in a number of different ways. But one thing that is not interpreted in a different way is, has that student been remediated? When I was in Jacksonville, teaching in Jacksonville, every time a student came to the dean's office, whether it's tardy, or whether it was fighting, or anything of that sort, that student was given a document to read and learn how that tardy affected the teacher and affected the other students, how that disrespect affected the classroom and affected everybody else before that kid was suspended. And equity starts with knowledge that I did something wrong, and some of the students don't understand how their behavior conflicts with instruction. So that's where the equity starts at.
All right. Thank you very much. Question number seven, and we begin with Ms. Wright. "Explain why you do or do not support ensuring the implementation of anti-bias and anti-racist training for all teachers and administrators."
I just want to, I want to restate that to you. So you're asking for me to say if I, number one, agree or disagree with training for that kind of bias? Okay, okay, thank you.
And then why? Explain why you do agree or don't agree in having that kind of training.
First of all, I do agree, because as a minority, I believe that everyone should have a discussion about topics that are very sensitive. And so when we talk about anti-bias for students and teachers, we have to understand and have a conversation of how did we get here, why are we here, and where do we move forward? And so having those conversations will allow us to develop a plan as we talk about social and emotional learning and how do we deal with one another. Dr. Grant said something that was very interesting about Duval County, but using that to now just be able to brainstorm and be able to write down how you feel and how you view certain things will allow us to then develop a plan to move forward, to have a sense of equity and a sense of peace within our district.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Mr. Grant, the same question, please.
Repeat it more specifically again.
"Do you support ensuring the implementation of anti-bias and anti-racist training for all teachers and administrators?" Explain your answer.
Yes, I do, and I support it with the board endorsement and direction. Anti-bias training cannot be delivered through the superintendent. Anti-bias training cannot be delivered, uh, through the superintendent's office, uh, through the, uh, human resources office. As a board, we need to review that training to make sure that training is sensitive, is, uh, on topic, and is going to ensure that we create a culture in our school system that, uh, invites and enjoys and experiences all of the traits that everyone brings to the school system. We have to teach African-American history in our school system. That is a travesty. Students walking into schools don't know anything about African-American history and our teachers. We have to teach that because that is where our country is right now. So I agree with it, but we need to buttress that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, Ms. Burnett, the same question, please.
Yes, absolutely, I definitely agree, we need to participate in such, um, such training. The, the, the intolerances of people not being treated equal has got to end. I think that in our communities, we have now seen that, we see the solidarity. And, um, and we, as a board, have to be the leader and we have to be seen as a person and a group of people who are going to make sure that that occurs. And I do agree with Mr. Grant, we need to look at an outsourced, an out-resourced, uh, company in order to help make that training possible and make sure that we're bringing in all stakeholders and, um, and addressing every need that needs to be addressed in that, in that anti-racism.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett, the next question, question number eight, Mr. Grant, you will be responding first. Providing a full array of district services at small schools can be expensive. What solutions do you support for the smaller schools?
Well, one of the solutions that I, I support is that we, uh, bring those services into a whole pot of offerings. But we cannot do that unless we are using all of the resources that are available. I want the members of this organization and other members of, of our community to go on to the Department of Education website, www.ed.gov, and go on to the post-secondary education, education website and look at those grants that are offered through the Department of Education. We cannot balance those inequities if we are not obtaining all of the grants that are offered by the Department of Justice, the Department of Education. There are so many opportunities out there, we need to strengthen those departments, that those departments can secure all of those resources to balance those schools.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Burnett, the same question, please.
Yeah, absolutely, we definitely need to support our, um, our smaller schools. And, and, um, by that, yes, they can be expensive, but, but those teachers and those students and that staff all deserve the same resources as the bigger schools. So what we need to do is look at how we can balance the budget over, uh, the, across the board, look for inefficiencies, and make sure that all the schools have the same resources and are treated fairly.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, same question, please.
Um, thank you. So when we talk about smaller schools, uh, we have built unique relationships with our business community to help provide and offset the cost. Uh, when we look at our budget, uh, we have streamlined our budget to, to assist with that effort. Grants are not overnight, and so we can't just depend on grants. We have to have something that is systemic, that we can continue to count on. So the business community have always played a major part in helping to support our smaller schools. But in addition to that, um, we do, we, we look at that, we redirect funds to make sure that they have the opportunities. But often, many of our small schools are Title I, so they are receiving additional funding that some of my larger traditional schools are not because they do not have the same designation. So again, partnering with our community has been a great asset for Volusia County, and I will continue to focus on those partnerships because often, uh, for each community, they have something uniquely different to offer, and those students are looking for something different.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Question number nine, Ms. Burnett, you will respond first. Every year, Volusia seems to be in a budget crisis. What priorities will guide your decision-making on budgeting, bonding, and meeting student needs?
Well, first off, we, what we need to do is prioritize, and we need to prioritize starting with direct classroom connections. We need to make sure that our priority go, starts with things that happen in the classroom in order to make sure that the students and the staff are safe and, um, and, and healthy. As you get further away from the classroom, that is where you stop the priorities, or that's where you, uh, take away the prioritization, um, you, you take it down the line. So priority needs to start in the classroom and with direct communication and input from the end-users with the teachers in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, your question.
Thank you, um, so as we look at our budget, you're correct, we always start in the deficit. We wait until our fourth quarter calculations to find out what we actually have, and normally we come up with a surplus. But with that, we do normally have to close the gap. We're always looking at, um, how we can make sure we ensure that the funding is in our classrooms. But when we talk about bonding, right now, we're looking at rebuilding schools, we're purchasing technology, and so is this the time to do it? Well, bonding is, uh, great for us because the interest rates are so low. And so we'll get a better bang for our buck versus pay as we go. And so when we talk about our funding and how we use our funds, the district has actually been really good on that. We have been very, uh, cost-effective, we make sure that we've met our budget, we make sure that we always try to include our raises. So for me, one of the things we can continue to do is streamline, but in streamlining, uh, and we look at technology, it will impact another area. But as it relates to funding, because of our funding, we probably will always have some shortfall, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. I apologize, I'm hesitating because I saw that, um, Sari's screen was, looked to me to be frozen uh, because the thirty seconds stayed up a while, but that may have just been my computer. I was getting a little nervous.
It, it was, but then it went back to the stop, so that's why I stopped, but then I saw her say stop.
Oh, okay, thank you, I never saw the stop, so that's what happened. All right, uh, Mr. Grant, oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Grant, same question. Every year, Volusia seems to be in a budget crisis. What priorities will guide your decision-making on budgeting, bonding, and meeting student needs?
Well, one of the things that are going, um, guided my decision is bringing hope back into our school district. We have so many students who don't see hope. We have so many students that need to see that their problems have multiple, uh, avenues to be solved. Multiple ways to look at the diversity and the challenges that they face. One of the things we did, again, I have to go back to Jacksonville, I was there thirteen years. They had toll roads, they got rid of toll roads and had a one-cent sales tax increase. If we brought in a half-cent sales tax increase in this county, do you know how much money that would bring in? That could shore up all of the inequities, all of the financial problems that we have. We have to consider that, and I think our community will get behind us and support that. So a half-cent sale tax at our supermarkets, at our stores would help us increase our, our, uh, bottom line as far as our budget and funding.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Wright, question number ten. There is a recommendation to combine Ortona and Osceola Elementary Schools into one school. Explain how you would address the facility plans for these schools.
Um, yes, and there is, and so when we talk about the facility plans, you got to know the programming. So one of the things that we have met with the teachers, administrators, and parents of those both communities to discuss, what do you plan to offer at this elementary or K, depending on what we decide? Based on that is how we will look at facilities. Uh, both of them have the, uh, unique challenges, uh, Osceola, uh, quite naturally for us, it's the water table. Ortona is the size, um, Osceola is thirteen acres, Ortona is eleven. So when we talk about which facility and, and how we would utilize the activities, we got to know what programming will take place there, how many students will be impacted if we bring and combine the two schools. And based on programming, based on students that we will participate, we'll de- define how we utilize the facility and which facility will be the best usage.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, the same question, please.
I would not agree with increasing, um, that school size in that area. We have a number of schools, and again, Turity Small Elementary, that is seventy years old. Across the street from a low, uh, poverty-stricken area, a housing community. We need new schools that have been in our area, uh, to, to help those students improve their, uh, outlook, motivate them. Turity moved from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen from a D to a B. We need to reward that community. That community needs to be rewarded for their hard work. So I think right now, that needs to be tabled, and we need to repair some, or rebuild some of our old and aging schools.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, Ms. Burnett, the same question, please.
Yes, so, uh, for an example, the, the, um, this is a long-term facilities planning. And, and that will require a long-term financial planning, which we cannot look at independently on schools. And I agree, Terry T. Small needs to be thought of in this process. They have not had any remodeling or re-renovation, uh, they're not up to standards. I've been there, I, I sat through and I, I walked through with Dr. Johnson. There's many things that school needs, those, those students there are wonderful little kids, and, and they deserve better. Um, so as far as the Ortona, uh, Osceola, maybe we should look at a plan to where we, uh, make one a kindergarten or a K, K, um, elementary school, and we make one a middle school, uh, in, in keeping those resources, but making enough, uh, effort to have another middle school. But I do believe we need to look at the financial and the long-term fiscal plan and, and keeping other schools that are in need of repair in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Mr. Grant, question number eleven. How do you plan on supporting teachers, parents, and staff during the COVID crisis?
Well, I plan to have a platform as a former classroom teacher that engages those teachers, protect those teachers and students, provide, uh, direction of how we're going to maintain their safety. If they are stricken with any, uh, the COVID symptoms, we're gonna have, uh, uh, procedures for which they can be either documented as having symptoms or being asymptomatic. And addressing that requires, uh, a benefit structure. How do we, uh, look at the benefits that teachers are going to have to, uh, uh, address? Will they be mounting, uh, days of absences? How are we gonna address when a teacher may have ten days absence with this COVID? Some people may be in the hospital or maybe out of, uh, uh, the classroom for two or three weeks, if not more. So we need to make adjustments in that area of how we're gonna keep that instruction with those students.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, Ms. Burnett, same question, please.
Yes, well, as a medical, um, a medical professional, I do not see how we can open schools in August. I think that we, um, I, I personally support, uh, following the CDC guidelines, and that was not opening the state until there was fourteen days of decreased COVID positive test results. I think that we need to make sure that we are practicing safe guidelines for the health and safety of our students and our educators and our staff, which means we may need to address doing, continuing the online education, which means we need to give teachers training in order to make that successful. We saw, we were put in a, in a quick position, and it did, it happened, but we need to do better for our students and our teachers. You can see that there was a lot of communication failures there, and we need to make that better for them providing this, uh, COVID continues on, which it looks like it will.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, the same question, please.
Thank you, and so we have provided some clear instruction. We, I am supporting starting school late, uh, as late as September eighth. Reason being, um, I'm concerned about the numbers, however, we got to make sure that we have equity. We've all talked about equity, they've actually talked about Turity Small, but let's talk about reality. Reality is that we do not have sixty-three device, sixty-three thousand devices for all the students of Volusia County to continue virtual learning. Number two, us, our teachers, our parents, and our students haven't been taught how to use the virtual, uh, technology. So I, I would not support that. Bringing them back to school, um, I'm not so much in the support of that, but the reality is, the longer we delay our start of school, the longer people will not get paid, which then will impact the economy. So opening up schools safe is important, you got to find a safe way. And with that, be it wearing face masks, uh, face shields, making sure we sanitize our class, having smaller classes, I'm, I am supporting all of those efforts because it's not a single issue, it's multi-dimensional.
Thank you, and I believe this, uh, will be our last question. It is question number twelve, and Ms. Burnett, you will answer first. In the last two years, there has been a large turnover in district leadership at multiple levels. The board only hires the superintendent and board counsel. Are you concerned about institutional knowledge and loyalty with this turnover? Please explain.
Institute, no, I, I am not. Institutional memory is something that we all would love to see and have. However, when, when we don't hold superintendent accountable for his actions, that is a process that rolls downhill. We had, the, the reason we have seen so much turnover results from the, the inability of the su- the former superintendent to hold his staff accountable. So I don't see that, fresh, fresh thoughts, fresh blood, new ideas, always welcomed, and sometimes really come out to make it a better, positive learning experience for the students.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, same question, please.
Um, so since I'm engaged in that, we have had some turnover, and, um, I do like a balance. Uh, we, we should have some institutional knowledge, because if you understand how we got there, if you understand the dynamics of the community, then you will not make the same mistake. And yes, I am a firm believer that we have to hold the superintendent accountable for his or her actions, um, as it relates to the district. But I'm also concerned about how we train and prepare and get people ready to become leaders in our district. So we have to make sure we have, one of my great concerns is our succession plan. Who do we have in the pipeline? Have we groomed enough people from the classroom to come into administration? And it, have we decided, or have we looked and helped, uh, develop people to become our superintendent internally? So there are some challenges with that, but it could go either way. You just got to make sure that within our district, and that is something we have initiated, is that we have a pipeline to create good talent to take on any role in our district, even the role of the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, Mr. Grant, your response.
Based on my experience, there is partiality in Volusia County schools. One of my friends is Dr. Earl Johnson, and I'm gonna go back to Turity Small. He took Turity Small from a D to a B school in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. There was no promotional opportunities for him. He left Volusia County Schools and went to Flagler County. Became Principal of the Year, not for Flagler County, but for the state of Florida as a finalist. How could we lose someone who grew up in this county? Someone who graduated from these, uh, Volusia County Public Schools and was a principal? Because there was impartial, well, partiality, I'm sorry, in promotion. We're not providing our principals in the top echelon with opportunities to move up. We have to have impartial policies that promote everybody and give everybody a chance to succeed. And what does that do? That increase morale and creates performance in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. It is now time for closing statements, and we will go in reverse order of the opening statements. So, Mr. Grant, you will be first, you have a minute and a half. And again, you will be noticed, uh, when you have thirty seconds left, and then the red card when it is time to stop. Mr. Grant, your closing statement, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. I have been a classroom teacher in the state of Florida for twenty-four years. I have been in public education for thirty-five years. I received an athletic scholarship, and I also received an academic scholarship. I know what it takes for students to show and I also received an academic scholarship. I know what it takes for students to show improvements in athletics, to show improvements in the classroom. As a French teacher, I taught French 1, 2, 3 at Atlantic High School. I taught special education at University High School, and I've spent time in more than five schools just in the state of Florida. We have to create an environment and a culture that increases academic achievement in the classroom, and our administrators and teachers must show that. We need to have principals who can go in and start in day one, bring grants in, improve faculty. We also need to have multicultural trainers in our system, so that we increase all of those behaviors that we want students to have. The situation that happened in Minneapolis can be stopped if we start with our elementary kids of teaching them African-American history all the way through our school system, so that we, we develop that diversity and that sensitivity that's needed. You have a choice. I believe I'm the best choice. My colleagues that I'm running against are fine people, but I bring a smorgasbord to the table, a buffet style that Volusia County School System can use.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. Ms. Wright, you now have your closing statement. One minute and a half. Ms. Wright?
Thank you. And, and I agree with Dr. Grant. My colleagues are very impressive. But at the end of the day, maybe Mr. Dr. Grant wasn't aware, I am an educator. I have taught in the classroom for 13 years on a collegiate level. We have engaged with elementary, middle, and high school my entire time at Bethel-Cookham University. I have served in leadership not only at, at this level, but at, at the university, where I was the dean of the college, College of Business and Entrepreneurship. But I wanna set that aside. I just wanna talk about what I bring to the table. We are in very challenging times, understanding where we are, how we got here, and what we need to do forward. You do need to have some continuity. When the, with faculty and staff, and some of my colleagues came to ask me to reconsider running for this position, the purpose was for continuity. We need someone that has a steady hand. I have displayed that for seven years, who really have a sense of empathy, but has a clear vision. With the time I got on the board, I always say, where do we go from here? 10 years from today. I'll say that now. 10 years from today, we will not have education, and it will not look the same. We have to plan for the future. We have to plan for the future. We gotta make sure we have the right people in place. We provide the right training and have the right use of technology. And I know where we are. I know how to get there. I've done it before, and I will continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Ms. Burnett, you have the final closing statement. One minute and a half. Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. Yes, I agree. I'm, I'm running against a couple of tough opponents, and they're very, they're very educated. I appreciate that. But I also have great leadership skills and great problem-solving skills. I think that's something that our leadership needs in the school board right now. We, we need to prove that. Listen, I, we have problems in our district. They've come from the school board. The board decided to privatize janitorial services despite the realization that wasn't working. They awarded the company another contract. When the district, when the superintendent was yielding poor results, they decided to go ahead and extend his contract. Then we're surprised when the, it resulted in early termination of, of him and scrambling to replace him. Now the school board is discussing a plan to reopen schools in August, and this should have been done and, and decided upon a month ago. And Mrs. Wright has been involved in every single one of these decisions. When I'm elected to the school board, I will ensure that, I will ensure that we make these, that we make these decisions happen. I will work to uphold the superintendent to his accountability and staffing responsibilities. Last year, Mrs. Wright announced that she was going to not seek reelection, that we need new blood, and I do agree with Mrs. Wright. We need to seek new opportunities for the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burnett, and thank you to all of our candidates. One last note. The League of Women Voters of Volusia County is a nonpartisan organization that endorses neither candidates nor political parties. It is our goal to educate and provide opportunities for the citizens of Volusia County to gather as much information as they can about issues and candidates, so the choices they make are informed choices. Please check out our league's website at L W V V C dot org for important links, and vote for 11.org for your individual ballot and our voter guide. Let's give a big round of virtual applause to our candidates. Thank you all so very much. I always love the end of a forum when everybody can yell and cheer and make a lot of noise, and it's hard to do it when you're muted. But I wanna say one thing to the listening audience, whoever you may be. Remember that it is your right, but more importantly, your responsibility to vote. Your vote does count, and not voting should not be an option. It is incumbent upon each of us to vote and encourage our neighbors and friends to do the same. The primary is critical. People are elected to office in the primary. Reminders. Day after tomorrow, Monday, July 20th, is the last day to register to vote in the primary. Change your signature. Change your party affiliation. Remember, if it is a partisan race, you have to be registered in that party in order to vote. The primary election, for those of you who aren't voting, show my age absentee, male voting, or who aren't going to early voting, the primary is Tuesday, August the 18th. Early voting begins on Saturday, August 8th, and runs through Saturday, August 15th, and the polls will be open for early voting only from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Volusia County, thank you to our candidates who have given up this time on a Saturday, when I know they all have something else they need to do, and to all of our viewers, thank you for joining us, and thank you for muting and stopping your video, so that this recording, when it is shown, will be as clear as possible. Thank you. Have a wonderful Saturday, and please stay safe. Goodbye.